Good afternoon. We apologize for being a bit tardy. We were in executive session that lasted a little longer than we thought. At this time, we'll call to order the public portion of our meeting. Let the record reflect, we have a quorum of Commissioners Harebrandt and Altman. First item is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have executive session memorandum to consider.
So moved.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have approval of minutes of 9:21, 23.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We have for public hearing, the PRO Housing Grant. Michelle Westermeier will present prior to the public hearing.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hopefully this works.
Oh, and we're gonna need, no, we can't tell. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, I am here before you today to provide some information about a grant opportunity the county is applying for. The grant itself is PRO Housing or Pathways to Removing Obstacles, opportunity through HUD. As the title suggests, the intent is to help communities identify and eliminate obstacles to affordable housing. At this time, the grant request, Hamilton County intends to request the maximum amount they offer, 10 million for affordable housing initiatives over five years. Just a quick summary kind of of the review criteria of the grant. Of course, there was an assessment of the need for affordable housing in our county. With the various housing studies and the work of the Hamilton County Housing Collaborative, there is certainly plenty of data that continues to show that we just do not have enough affordable housing for those wishing to live here, especially with specifically rental housing. One-third of households that make less than 66,300 or 80% AMI pay over 30% of their monthly income towards housing costs, which suggests that they are a cost burden and that is certainly a factor to consider. Additional issue that we've identified is just the rate of production of housing. Housing units in general aren't keeping up with the rate of growth that the county is experiencing, but more specifically, that rate of affordable housing production is even further behind the growth of the county. Continuing on with the review criteria, the soundness of approach. As we've discussed in this grant and discussed in some working sessions, it seems pretty apparent that the county is in an ideal position to move forward and pursue this grant in hopes of removing many of those obstacles that we've identified. Building upon a lot of what the Housing Collaborative has already completed, we hope to assess and recommend updates to municipal policies and procedures. A lot of work has been completed already on determining how to establish a community land trust for Hamilton County and how that might be tailored to meet the needs of the county. And also implement a community engagement plan to better address the stigma that is often seen when people think of affordable housing or Section 8 housing, trying to remove a lot of the negative aspects of that and educate the public on really what the benefit of having that diverse housing stock is. In a nutshell, the long-term effect is that we just hope to see a significant increase in the production and availability of affordable housing for all of our residents. Proposed activities, and again, this is to be completed over a five-year period, as I mentioned previously, we wish to analyze a lot of the land use policies for each of the communities, all eight of the communities if possible, as well as the county as a whole. Proposed updates for each of those municipalities' land use and development strategies. Another activity will focus on people. We want to increase the organizational capacity for the development of affordable housing as well as preserving the existing affordable housing that we do have. That's another issue that's been identified is some of the existing affordable housing complexes have essentially, or they're at the point where they're aging out of that restriction, but have turned to market-ready units instead of remaining affordable. Third activity, and the one that will, as you'll see when we get to the budget, will consume most of the funds, is the actual production of affordable housing. Specifically, we hope to tackle three separate affordable housing projects. Of course, the location is yet to be determined. We'll certainly be working with, you know, local housing developers, nonprofit housing developers, to pursue that and complete those projects. The fourth activity is the promotion, that community engagement that the Housing Collaborative is working on currently in hopes of, again, eliminating that stigma that comes with the affordable housing. The proposed budget for the whole project, we have estimated 250,000 for those policy updates contracting that were for the capacity or people, 1,430,200 for the affordable housing production projects. Again, currently looking to do three of those over the five years. An estimated 13,675,000 and then with the promotion of community engagement, 200,000 for a total of 15,555,200. As I mentioned, we intend to ask the maximum amount for the PRO Housing Grant, so that is 1 million. The remaining amount over the five years, we anticipate can be covered with other matching sources, CBBG funds, home funds, foundation funds, things of that nature. And to wrap up, the next steps that we have, we are currently in the midst of the public comment period. That will end October 16th. The public can go to either the county website or the Housing Authority's website, and there's a link on the main page that will take you to the grant application, that information, and give people an opportunity to provide comments or questions. Following the end of that public comment period, want to finalize that grant application and the narratives, so kind of doing some last-minute tweaks here and there with the grant writing team. And then on or before, hopefully before October 30th, we will be submitting that application through the grants.gov as an online submission. We have not heard when HUD intends to announce the awards. During one of the online workshops that they had offered, there was mention that maybe by January or February of next year we would know. We just have to wait and see, so. And then a quick thank you, obviously, to the Commissioners, the Hamilton County Grant staff, Todd.
Thank you.
CJ, our planning director as well, offering a lot of valuable information, the staff with HAND Incorporated, and then of course, the municipal housing staff. Any questions?
None, great job.
Thank you. Well, since this is a public hearing solely on the PRO Housing Grant, if anyone would care to address the board as to comments concerning the presentation, we would entertain the same. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
All right, next up is highway business.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Since we just had a meeting with you Friday, I have a very wide agenda for you today. I have no road permits, no private traffic control permits, no bonds for, no vehicle exemption permits, no bonds for acceptance or release, no agreements or supplements, no exceptions to streets. I do have a list of traffic correspondents dated October 9, 2023, containing four responses to recommend the board approve these four.
So moved.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have no public works, curation results, official actions, correspondence, or other announcements unless Brad has anything.
Nope.
Great.
You're done.
Wow, unbelievable.
Well, thank you for catching me up on my schedule.
Yeah, very nice.
Very good news. Pretrial services. CJ Miller?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We should have you before you hopefully. Okay, thank you Ken. A contract between the Office of Court Services, the state's report for 2024 grant funding is $74,045. That will be for January 1st through December 31st of 2024, and that pays for the salary of one of our pretrial officers for next year. I'm just asking approval that we can finish up the process on getting those funds of grant contract back to Office of Court Services. Judge Njar and I have already reviewed it and signed off, and so we're just asking you all to sign off and give us permission to.
Motion to approve.
Second, but I do have a question on your target population.
Yes.
It seems like accepted out classes or alcohol-related offenses. That's on page two of seven, unless I'm reading it incorrectly. And unless they need to be incarcerated until their blood alcohol's go down? I'm not understanding.
Yes, they can't be assessed until they're no longer registering. They can't be under the influence with alcohol or drugs.
Okay, for the assessment.
For the assessment.
But after their DOA goes down?
Correct, right, then we, yes.
Okay, good, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, correct, nope.
Seems like they would.
Absolutely. Yeah, they have to be alcohol and drug-free before we can interview them.
Okay. But sex offenders are, they're on the list for pretrial? I know your criteria is reoffending.
Right. There are certain offenses, that's not all in here with the local rules and everything, there are certain offenses where they cannot be released, they can be assessed, but they still see a judicial officer before they can be released.
Okay, good. I just wanted to clarify.
Right, yeah.
I was seeing no alcohol but others.
Related to violent crimes, things like that, yes, they're on that list.
Got it.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. ISSD, Mr. Martins. Chris, are we gonna ever get these iPads to work?
Yeah, yeah, they should, I didn't know they weren't working, so yeah.
Does yours work?
No.
Nothing?
Yeah, we'll take a look at them.
Okay, thanks.
I got several items here. I'll just start at the top of the list. There are Network Solutions, InformaCast, it's a subscription renewal. That's how we just do the internal alerting and phone notifications. Also, it does some of our emergency alerts from phones in different offices.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is a collaborative solutions change order that reduces the project by approximately $69,000, takes out the organizational change and some of the training components that we're taking on ourselves.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is a disposable assets form that's gone through the process and through the auditor's office. Those all were taken to HHW.
Motion to approve.
Second, those are all just eliminated fresh? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is a quote for five Cisco access points, some additional ones.
So moved.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is for some Dell servers, just for server replacements for our Oracle applications that we have here in the county.
Motion to approve.
Second, is this on the state QBI?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is, it's a zero-dollar change order for UKG. It's just a change that shows they'll be traveling onsite, but there's no additional charges.
Yeah, so moved.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rushforth, Safety Risk Management.
Good afternoon. Today, I'm before you, request an approval to repair a damaged vehicle assigned to the Sheriff's Department. The vehicle was damaged on September 18th when a county employee attempted to make a left-hand turn on 146th Street and struck a privately-owned vehicle. The vehicle was taken to Miller's. An estimate was obtained. I've reviewed the estimate, there's no concern of the vehicle being in total loss, and the vehicle be recommended for repair.
So moved.
Second discussion, is everybody okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Come on, squeaky shoes. This was last minute. Thank you, Mr. Connor asked me to bring to you as well.
I have just a couple of things today. First one I just handed you out was about the 4H project. I wanted to make sure that we are at $15 million project limits. General construction conditions, equipment, staffing is $1,312,162. Bicentennial buildings, $6,333,000 for $10. Lama barns, $2,057,994. Maintenance and storage is $777,018. Inside work is $4,519,416, which is basically your grain.
Yeah.
I did present this at the county council on their last meeting. They didn't meet the 15 million threshold.
What kind of contingency do you have in this?
Well, right about a million dollars when it's all said and done.
Okay.
Connor, the contract is coming back to Connor. I asked him to remove some items from the contract. I think you're aware of one of the items, so as soon as that comes back, that will come before you.
Okay. Would you like approval on this budget?
Nope, I'm just letting you know, this is your update. That's requested.
What about the proceeds from the Winx, et cetera?
So, yeah, so since there has been no proceeds at this time, now that you have a wish list, but the majority of that money will go towards infrastructure, and then the other stuff will come out of the regular budget. But since there is no proceeds at this time, they have to be moving forward with 15 million. Once that comes back, we'll go to ask council for that percentage of that. Same thing with the Pleasant Street projects, we're gonna ask for a percentage of the two for infrastructure work.
Okay, and drainage, is that, are there?
That is roughly 65% of the drainage. Since they're not building the whole project down, the new buildings were mostly lying stuff because they could change over the years, that portion's not being done. The pond, the main drainage coming through to fix the horse arena, where the bicentennial building, the cattle barn, all that drainage gets fixed in Russell.
Okay.
Along with the bigger retains in the back end, we're gonna enlarge the drainage in the east side of that project, and none of that has anything to do with the city's Pleasant Street project.
Okay. So will the capacity be built into this segment of the project for the whole site?
So 70% of the capacity.
Okay.
So until the other buildings are done, that pond in the very back will expand.
On the south side?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So then, I have some Skinner contracts for you. What these are is, these are, you approved Skinner's work, these are the actual costs. One is for my cute courthouse. are, you approved Skinner's work. These are the actual costs. One is for my acute courthouse fund, which will take care of all the windows of those projects at the courthouse that was approved in my general budget. And then the contract for all the, the health department, H V A C system, jail upgrades, everything that will be, will have overcapacity now to maintain the buildings. They'll all be updated since all those were lives were done in the nineties. And that is all covered underneath these contracts.
And Connor, you've reviewed those?
Yes, it's good to go, yep. Everything's good.
Is there one?
Motion to approve.
And one last thing is, is seeking your approval for usage of the parking garage for Noblesville Fire Department for those events, for the training.
Okay, let's do the contracts. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the use of the parking garage?
Correct.
For fire training?
For fire training.
Okay, and you figured it will not damage the building or interfere?
Yeah, so what they're gonna do, they're basically take all the fold-up hoses, and they're gonna do it even while people are there because it doesn't affect anything. They're gonna hook onto the bids, and they're gonna take them up the steps and come back down. So typically on the weekend, we'll let them use it, and they'll charge the whole system. But since this is gonna be through the weekend, they have so many different shifts, they're not gonna charge. We're gonna do hookups, take up the stairs, and come back down.
Okay, motion to approve.
Which is a great usage for that, and for them to be able to do some training there.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Better than the meat.
Yes. The Dyken contract is also, I'm sorry, the Dyken contract is in front of you. This is full service and parts and labor. The only thing that's minus will be any of the refrigerant and all that. So the prime example is what we did, the work we did just across behind us. It was roughly about forty thousand dollars worth of work. They put a new compressor in, they put a new coil in it. That's all covered underneath that.
So they give you a price for refrigerant per pound?
Correct. Which is, which is, it's actually, we got below the cost of purchasing. So this takes care of every unit we have, including these two buildings, the Yale complex.
What's the total cost?
Uh, sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty a year for three years.
For, yeah, okay. So moved.
Second discussion. You're with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Court Administration, Jill. There you are. Hello.
Good afternoon. We have an attorney who is a, serves as a public defender in Superior Court Six, will be going on maternity leave very soon. And Steve Stays is going to take over her, her contract in Judge Guven's court for November and December. So this contract just shows that he'll be the public defender in there for two months, the rest of the year.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Health Department, Jason Lee Mast.
Good afternoon.
Aye.
Here before you today to ask your permission or to, an approval of a purchase order that we have for a module to some subscription-based software that our fire and EMS and hospitals can use in our county. This is related to tracking patients in real time. One of the best examples I can give you, the quickest example I can give you would be in a mass casualty incident. Should families or patients be separated at the event through the software and the use onsite by our EMS personnel? Should they get diverted to another hospital? The ability in the backend of our fire hospitals and our emergency management and ourselves will be able to help track and get families reconnected with patients. The first year, it's a multi-year project, but the first year, we can use our preparedness grant dollars that we have in the county to help do the lift with this. And this would be to provide the subscription service implementation, some training and configuration hours, and the exchange. The very nice thing about this software is it integrates with existing Japara products that we have here in the county. Web E O C, E M resource, you've probably heard of. And also, it's called E I C S, which is Emergency Incident Command System. So this is a module that builds on top of what we already have.
Oh, good.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. And thanks for coming up with that report on the property issues we had north of town.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
When it was brought up in my mind in the back of the crowd, I knew we'd had some, but I wasn't sure what all we had done. And when I got back and spoke with my staff, I wanted to try to get you a little more information.
Yeah, and please have your inspectors be careful when they go out there, please.
Yeah, be very careful.
Yeah.
Okay. In fact, they may wanna have some accompaniment.
They usually take on enforcement.
Thank you. That makes me feel good.
And mostly that's because we're dealing, there's animals and those kinds of things. So it's a great partnership that we have at the Sheriff's Department and working with animal control.
No, I was worried more about the human.
It helps us a lot to have that, but that's how we try to look at it. Because we do have a decent working relationship out there, so.
Okay, good.
Good.
Hello. Thank you for what you do. Commissioner Committee reports.
I attended a meeting at Sheridan High School, or Sheridan Middle School with the superintendent 's administration and several community members throughout Sheridan area to discuss the upcoming operating referendum. And he wanted to convey his gratitude and thought, or and thanks to commissioners and the council for being able to provide the seed money for a transformational alternative school that they have in downtown that is shared with Westfield as well as Hamilton Heights, and was very appreciative of that. He expects a lot of success, expects at least three to four graduates by the end of the year, and we've already had one already. So this will be a sustainable project from, from this point on, now that we've been able to help them with the seed money.
Well, that's great. I mean, some kids just need a little more.
Absolutely.
A little more help.
It's been great. And we have the right person there at the alternative school, too.
And that's a right time to catch them.
Yeah.
Been spending a lot of time on the scoping of the nine-one-one E O C center. But given the, the potential costs, it's well worth the time. Also, Connor and I have been working on some TIF areas, trying to figure out appropriate actions moving forward, meetings with clients. Attorney, Mr. Connor Sol.
Yes, I have two items for you, for you guys today. One is ordinance ten-nine-twenty-three B. That is an ordinance that updates the county's septic and sewage disposal ordinance. Indiana law was recently amended, and this updated language allows us to administer the permitting process a little more efficiently. And, well, I guess Jason's here, too, if, if you'd like to have him.
Keep going, you're doing a great job.
No, you're the expert.
Yes. I would say today, we request, after Jason's conclusion, that you guys adopted on first reading, fines and everything will take place thirty days after we notice it appropriately. Yes. With that, Jason, do you want to briefly touch on it?
Sure. I believe Connor summed it up very well. Last year's legislation, basically, House Enrolled Act twelve forty-five, essentially kind of null-avoid county ordinances that exceeded the state code, and basically said all county ordinances have to be redone to follow the state code. And then any additionals that we would want to do, or we would have in our ordinance that would be outside of the state code legislation this year, as well as another piece of, of legislation, Senate Enrolled Act four, four-one-four, or fourteen, started dealing with holding tanks as more of a permanent basis than a temporary basis for permanent sewage disposal. An example I could probably give would be like the Riverwood area, where you don't have a great access to sewer, but we have dwellings that are lived in. I can't repair a septic system. This gives us some means and some mechanisms by law.
What about new construction? Holding tanks?
Uh, those are still.
It's allowable commercially and residential.
Okay.
It is? Well, because some building sites are just not built, I mean, you cannot put septic in.
We tried to do a very good job beforehand and not get it all the way to that, that process, but it would be allowable on some new sites. We have a very good, that's probably one of the benefits, I think, of, of not only of our ordinance and our program here, is we have a very good working relationship with our contractors, our soil scientists, our building departments, and, and what we do, that we've really never had to necessarily exceed the state code. I think only a few things that we've listed out there. We currently, in our current ordinance, have a contractor registration. Basically, if you're gonna do work in the county, you register with the health officer. That's outside of state code. Most counties are putting that in. We're putting that back in our ordinance. We are going to require to reconnect to a sanitary sewer, much like we're already doing now. That's more policy or another legislation to require a, a state-recognized form for that inspection. So, so nothing really there. Some pre-construction meetings. Sometimes some of these sites are bad enough that it's like, hey, we need to make sure that we're protecting this site. So we really feel like our program and what we're doing with our ordinance is really about protecting those whole bumpers.
And I think our, our health department's done a really good job with that.
I, I, I believe so. I believe so. So, yeah, so that's, that's what it is. And just kind of, again, cleaning up language. It was really needed over many years and, and it does. After, after the county approves it, there's still another step in the process based on the legislation that we have to submit our county-approved ordinance to the state, to what's called a technical review panel. And that technical review panel mainly looks at those items that might be outside of state code, and they can either, they most likely will approve all the things that we're asking for because they're not a stretch. But then they could reject an item here or there. So we might have to come back. But I, I really doubt it. With how this was written and as well done as it is, we'll be fine.
Motion to approve.
Second, what, what's the, the legislative deadline to get it done?
Actually, we could start submitting them October the first. It actually, July, July the first of this year was when all county ordinances had to follow in the state code. They had informed us that we're still good using our current ordinance number. However, we could not apply anything that exceeded the state code, so.
Yeah, this is the first one we can do.
So this, the first motion is to suspend the rolls and adopt on first reading?
Yes.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the second is to adopt ordinance ten-zero-nine-dish-twenty-three-b.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The second item I have is the requesting the Board of Commissioners permission to work with the Commissioner President, Commissioner Altman, to finalize an R F P that we, was it Monica Greer, David Berman, and Brandon George, and Mike Bevito have worked on for, it's gonna be for some of the opioid litigation funds the county's received.
Yeah.
It's, we will be requesting proposals that they understand that they will not be, not exceed fifty thousand dollars. And Mike's here if he wants to ask, if you have any questions on the actual program details. But we will work with Commissioner Altman to finalize this and then also publish the notice to get this going. Mike, is there anything else you want to, specifically you want to touch on that for?
It would be an R F F from the county because you'd be soliciting competitive grants. We would be using the council and alcohol and other drugs. Their board of directors has volunteered to serve as a vetting committee for you, because they're a group that already makes substance use focused restricted grants themselves. So it's a really good way to funnel up to you, really high quality recommendations. The proposed proposal has two rounds of submissions available, one in February and one in August of two thousand and twenty-four. And we would begin, once approved by you, just kind of promoting that opportunity in order to get really good community applications in. There is no maximum amount set at this time, or recommend them not to be formalized for how much you should or would give out. But it is a really good way for us to collect proposals, seeing what out there in the community would like to be done with these dollars for restricted purposes.
Right, motion to approve.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I do have a quick question. We have the other study going through with ARPA funds. Where are we with that in terms of the center that would be intake, et cetera?
Correct. So we, the project team sent along some, some framework for an R F P for the business plan to the county attorney and the, the team and the attorney went back and forth regarding kind of the framework for that plan. But it has yet to be, the business plan, R F P, has yet to be published by the county, and the county has some next steps on that.
We can add, we can have another motion for you to approve that, working with you as well, Commissioner Altman. Right now, the subject matter of the actual R F P is good to go. We're just fine tuning it, make sure that meets the procurement guidelines that would be needed for that.
I think it'd be better if we had a chance to review that before we take action. This is more straightforward.
Yeah.
So, but the other one, we're talking more significant dollars, and it's gonna be a long-term project. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Connor?
Uh, no, I got a couple. On the agenda is an ordinance, and, and we dealt that drainage board, and it'll be amended and bring back to you in two weeks. That's ordinance ten-dish-zero-nine-dish-twenty-three-A. So we do need to continue that until your next meeting.
Is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second one is liability trust fund claim for legal services over several months for pending litigation, itemized and totaling three thousand, twenty dollars.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Connor, has there been any update on the animal ordinance at all? Where's things stand at right now with that?
I met with Amy Summerfield last week, and we are working through that. Hopefully we'll have an update for you guys at the next meeting. I think it'll.
Okay, thank you.
Be more than just what Amy and I can, that we'll need to solicit some guidance from you guys going forward, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we need to have a work session?
Let me, let me follow up with you guys on that. I'll, I'll follow you now.
Okay. All right, Director of Administration.
Okay. Several items for you today. First off, presenting for your review, approval, and signature, I have a request by surveyor Kent Ward, dispose of approximately eight pieces of old, broken, obsolete, or otherwise worthless surveyor equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is similarly presenting for your review, approval, and signature, a request by the prosecuting attorney. Mr. Garrison disposed of approximately eighty old and or broken office or conference room chairs with an estimated value of zero dollars.
Motion to approve.
Discussion. You don't have to create our own plaintiff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number three, presenting for your discussion approval, this issue of Halloween trick-or-treating hours for the historic courthouse and the Judicial Center on Tuesday, October thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. I believe I was advised that the typical hours are between eleven A M and three P M. Anybody has any different information on that?
I think that's right.
Pretty close. We usually just get the little kids because everybody else is in school.
So we'd ask for your approval for those proposed hours?
Motion to approve.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, presenting for your review, discussion, approval, a request from Jeff Rushforth from the Waits and Measures Department for an extension to utilize his remaining P T O time, which he has been unable to utilize due to the other member of the Waits and Measures Department being out on extended medical leave. Jeff would request that he be granted an extension until February twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-four, so that he can utilize his time without it being negatively impacting the Waits and Measures Department.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, presenting for your review, discussion, approval, a request from Bob Duois, C E O of Noblesville Chamber of Commerce, to conduct the annual tree and square lighting ceremonies, utilizing the lobby of the Judicial Center and the courthouse square on Saturday, November twenty-fifth, between the hours of six P M and seven-thirty P M, with access to the Judicial Center at four-fifteen P M for the audio technician to set up.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Always a great event. Aye.
Thank you. Number six, presenting for your review, discussion, and decision, list of appointments made by Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. I wanted to make you aware that, of the upcoming appointments for two thousand and twenty-four, including an appointment coming due on eleven eighth of two thousand and twenty-three, just over a month, just under a month from now, for the Sheridan Library Board. Additionally, as of last week, the Hamilton County's Public Additionally, as of last week, the Hamilton County's Public Library has an opening, as you're aware of. So I wanted to make you aware of all those things. I also wanted to advise that the ISS Department has confirmed that they are ready to go live with the Request for Board Appointment Application Portal on the Hamilton County website. As you're aware, uh, this is an important step that will enable us to properly obtain all of the necessary information and data that is to be, uh, in order for us to be compliant with Title VI requirements.
Yeah.
So when is that to go live?
Um, well, I just think as soon as you give your final authorization today, there'll be broadly shortly thereafter.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Flip the switch.
Okay. I will let them know. Uh, one last, last-minute item, um, we apparently just received a request from the owner of EGO Entertainment Network to do some filming in one of our courtrooms. Uh, they would like to do this one day for approximately four to five hours during the week of December twenty, of twenty, December eighteenth of twenty twenty-three. Would be my request that, uh, if you are okay with the general concept, that we then turn the matter over to Court Administration and let them make a final determination. Well, one, if they, if they want to permit it, and two, if.
That's Steve Wood as well. Make a motion to approve that, on those conditions.
It's gonna be disruptive. Do we really want a private entity?
I, to be quite frank with you, I learned of this request, uh, just this morning, and I talked to Jill Ackland as you were beginning the meeting. It's their normal practice, probably, to refuse to allow it, but.
To yes or no?
I know we did some filming over in the historic.
They would normally not permit it.
We did some filming over in the historic courthouse, so.
But that's not utilized, like upstairs, and we don't have the traffic or the type of activity.
And, and they're utilizing that even more now?
I, I would be inclined to table that until we have the board.
Okay, I'll agree with that. I'll make a motion to table.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I just, it gives pause, given the sensitive nature of what we have going on upstairs.
Understood.
Thank you. That's, uh, everything I had today.
Sheriff. Uh, just looking for some direction, the Henry County Sheriff, John Sproles, reached out to me. He's got, uh, he's in need of five, uh, sheriff vehicles, and asked if we would have anything that, um, we're getting ready to get rid of. We did just, uh, get, or we were getting ready to get an order in, and we have the last set of vehicles that are our own, owned vehicles. I just didn't know if you guys are interested in trying to provide, or what value we wanted to assess to them to try to let them purchase them. Just wanted to open it up to you guys to see what.
I'd probably looked at Enterprise. I mean, they do a lot of our pricing on, you know, when we are getting rid of our vehicles. Um, at least.
We could ask them for a bid and then offer it up to the county if they wanted to.
So ask Enterprise to bid them and then go?
Well, yeah, because those are owned, they're not gonna be in it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
If they're interested, then otherwise, we'll figure out another way to appraise them.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, I don't know if, and I think Enterprise usually gets them in and then turns them over and goes from there, but.
Is that how they do it?
But.
Okay.
But we can, we can check to verify that, and if, if they can easily give us a quote, that would be great. If they can't, then we'll just trust, Sheriff's Department can come up with a reasonable value that we could offer them to Henry County.
Yeah, it's, those are significant assets that have useful life. I don't feel comfortable just saying, our taxpayers will pay for your.
No, no, I don't.
Yeah. I just wasn't sure what value we had assessed to those in the past, like we did, like, we just ran on Kelley Blue Book and got trade-in value and that type of.
Yeah, that's, that would be a normal way to do it, if, if Enterprise isn't interested.
Sure.
But gov deals, too. I mean, if, if they're not, then I think we need to put them up on gov deals or a trade on our new fleet.
Sure, okay. Well, we'll get with Enterprise and see if they can get some values and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
You're at the auditor stage.
Just a couple things today. Uh, first, I have the, um, liability trust monthly expenditure report for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, I have acceptance of bonds and letters of credit for Drange Ford for your approval.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next, I have payroll claims for your approval.
So moved.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I have vendor claims for your approval.
So moved.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Why?
Thank you.
Last thing I'd like to bring up is, uh, I know that this has been a long ordeal with, uh, Scott Wilson and Wilson's Food Market, um, up on US thirty-one. We have, as a county, tried everything that we could to help them through the process of being, having denied access to two-hundred-and-fifty-sixth Street. And, um, at one time, we were told by MDOT that this would not, they would, they would keep it open, and then they turned around and, and, uh, decided to close it. So, um, we were pleased to hear that they were not gonna force eminent domain, um, on the Wilsons. Uh, this is a vital, um, place for the people in the northern part of Hamilton County, and they rely on that, um, there. And so I know that we have had some discussions with, um, well, whether it was Lieutenant Governor or other jurisdictions about the potential of passing some type of resolution, um, to help them. Commissioner Altman, do you have anything else you want to add?
Yeah, and speaking with the Wilsons, I think they're more altruistic, altruistic than that. It's, in our thoroughfare plan, I believe we were showing two-fifty-six as being an artery we wanted to keep open.
It's a primary artery.
Yes.
Yeah.
And.
We showed future interchange there.
And it is disturbing that, you know, that things change, and I understand that. But from a public state, safety situation, trying to cross that thoroughfare is, is vital for fire trucks, for public safety, for sheriffs, for the police departments, and closing that down is gonna add a significant amount of time for response, especially with mutual aid.
Not only to mention schools.
And schools, et cetera. And I, I truly think that we should ask MDOT to reconsider that closure and take a position that it remain open just for connectivity and public safety. So, um, do you have a motion to resolve, to contact, to have the county attorney draft or have highway draft, um, a resolution to keep that access open?
Yeah, I would make a motion to have the attorney and the highway department to work on a resolution, um, for future approval to keep the, or the intersection open, um, until, obviously, we can get an interchange, which is our goal there at that, uh, particular site on US thirty-one, to maintain that thoroughfare plan that we currently have in place.
And I would second that and would request that our thoroughfare plan be noted in that resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All righty, anything else from our Diaz on what to do? We have a continuation of this meeting, um, in Conference Room One A with work sessions for long-term work and storage for the election department, and also, um, American Rescue Plan. We have a committee on that. So those are public meetings. Let's, you're scheduled to commence the first work session at three o'clock.